Tululepa's planning and zoning meeting July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. We did have an agenda in front of us. We will be having a public hearing and giving everyone an opportunity. Just and then we have some special guests here with Georgia E P D that we will also be able to ask questions to. Can I get an approval to call the meeting to order? All in favor? Okay, the adoption of the agenda, there is one agenda item that I need to add and then we can make a change. Effective immediately, we have received the resignation of our secretary Teresa Dyer. So we need to add that to the agenda to accept that resignation. And then you wanted to make a change?
Yeah, I'd like to just put the land disturbance questions first. Since we have Travis and Heather from E P D here. If we have questions and things as far as the land disturbance is concerned that they can answer. It'd be great to be able to get that through for them so they can be on their way because they've been gracious enough to give us their time.
Okay, I think the only thing is is we publicize for a public hearing at six P M. So we can make that, you know, unless we have a lot of it. Maybe they can talk about that also. So I don't know that we can make that change as far as the public hearing. So we hope to get them through as quick as we can.
All right.
Can I get an approval with the agenda has changed? Second, all in favor? Adding to or for the public hearing is on the tree preservation ordinance. And there is copies here on this table. We have met, we've had workshops on this. So what we did is we kind of took the ordinance as written in Tululepa's. And then we had some other counties that we looked into, city of Eatonton or Eaton. And then some from Clayton and we looked at also in Cleveland's and oh, I'm sorry, for Scott Valley, yeah. So we combined those and we thought what would make this work in the town of Tululepa's. But this is a public hearing. There will be two public hearings. The city, the P and C board would only make recommendations to the city council. The city council then would have to approve any changes or any adoption of an ordinance. So this by far is is not written in stone until the city council has had a chance to to make that change or to make this.
There's another public meeting with Pete Adams or there's another one with the city council?
There is a public meeting with us.
There's points in the council for a public hearing before.
Yeah, yeah. So it's once with us. We make recommendations and then the city council will then have a public hearing before any adoption of the ordinance. Some cities require two public hearings. So I don't know that the city council will actually have two before voting.
I think it's just us and then one for them.
Okay, all right. So I don't know if anyone's had a chance to to read over this, but we would like to make this recommendation to the city council. Introduce the proposed legislation and then comment to the the audience who is in favor of this ordinance. If you would and you want to speak, if you would come up to the table, introduce yourself and make your comments.
Do you have a question during the same?
Yes, sir, you can. We'll try our best.
For someone who hadn't read it, which is my my fault. Thank you for you guys. One of the questions I have regarding this, does it discuss the removal of trees once cut? Okay, good. That obviously gives piles of trees we have in the mountain. That's kind of critical.
Yes, sir. And I think after a certain time period, there is a fee or a fine implied to that. I think the fine is pretty heavy. It's somewhat like a hundred dollars after first fifteen days. Yeah. It's under section, the criminal pieces and violations. It's page five.
No, I just want to see if I've covered. I haven't had you up to really get through all of it yet.
Okay, it's fourteen days for completion. A fine up to a hundred dollars per day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I guess the removal of any trees, trims.
So trees, not if they're a building.
Yeah, this is a tree ordinance question. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir. If you would, if you would introduce yourself because I'm near Tululepa's. So I'm not playing with everybody.
I'm Monty Axon. I live at four twenty-one degree on Mountain Road. Got the mountain a little bit. I do appreciate what you guys are doing because this is long overdue. I mean, this is something that should have been done. And you should you shouldn't have to be dealing with it now, but I'm grateful that you guys are dealing with what this is and what you got coming up. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of a tree ordinance. I want to say that upfront. But I also want to say I am kind of a little bit concerned that you've given us the public twenty-four hours to be notified and find this and read it and understand. You've had weeks to put it together and I'm grateful for all you've done. This is not enough time for me to really want to study this the way I want to and to make good comments. Whether it's pro, con, or against it, whatever, because I am in favor of ordinance. I just feel like it's a little too fast. Okay, and whether you're doing it for this one or the ones you're going to be doing later this evening and for future sessions. I don't know. I thought you had to give more than a twenty-four hour notice for a public hearing.
On behalf of the P and C board, I would like to say that we have had two meetings on this.
I've listened to both of those.
Okay.
Okay, but you did you did not have this to look at in either one of those meetings for the public to see.
Right. Well, it was a combined effort of all the other.
I know that. I listened to your last session.
Okay.
But to 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 go through all this and read it, I've got about, I don't know, more than a dozen comments on here. And I could go over all of them and take the time to do that. But if I had time, I know who most of you all are. I could just go my list and contact many of you and say, here's my concerns. Explain some of this. Some of this to me is conflicting. Some of it I don't understand. Some of it I agree or disagree with. So it's just not enough time. That's that's my real point. I mean, I have to go through all my comments and suggestions. And the other thing is you've got names on here like building inspector, city manager, city marshal. I don't know if we have those people.
To clarify that also, I think that the police chief would be the policing this as far as making.
It's a city marshal that you got in here. Is that what you mean?
Well, it's a city, the city.
I know, I know that. I'm just, these names you got in here specified, we were supposed to approve or disapprove in what area.
Yeah.
And I don't think you had those titles for people that I'm aware of. So I don't know if you're going to get new people to come in here to do that or you're going to use existing people.
No, police chief will be taking over what's called the quote unquote marshal.
Okay.
That will be the enforcement of it.
Right.
The city manager is our secretary.
Was your secretary?
No, no, no.
Oh, Linda. See, I didn't know her title was city manager either.
Right.
I think she's considered city clerk.
Right.
Officially.
So I'm the point is some of your terminology in here is not defined, right? I mean, it's just it's loose. And I've got some other ones in here I could just keep talking about, but I don't want to take up all the time. I'd rather give you a more in detail list of some of my concerns. And I'm asking you not to present this to the city council. I mean, I think you should wait and give the people of Tululepa's at least a week to be able to understand this. Right here, he hasn't seen it, but he has. He's heard about it or he has a concern about it, whether you're for or against it. I just don't think it's enough time for everybody to have to look at.
And we appreciate that. And we can make, you know, those name changes and possibly have another meeting prior to presenting it to the city council. But again, we are here just to make recommendations and we value what you're saying. So so yes, we can make this. Even though we knew what it was talking about, I can say that completely.
But I mean, I know that. That's why I asked if you had, how many meetings you guys were going to have. If you're going to have one public meeting and this is it and it's done, then there's not going to be another chance for the public to come to you guys unless they go one-on-one with you to present it. That's why.
There's another public meeting.
Yeah, it would be the city council that would make final changes.
I know that, but you're presenting this to the city council. I say you shouldn't even present it yet. The city should have a chance. The public should have a chance to go to tell you what they like or dislike and for you to evaluate it to make any changes if that's what you're going to do before you present it to the council.
And we could do that. We could set another meeting for the public to have a before prior to sending it to the city council. If you want to do that.
I don't know. It's just my comment. The other thing is your next agenda you got coming up later this evening, you got a lot more coming up. Items that really need to be discussed and defined. And that's even just as important or more important than maybe some of what this is. And for me to understand all that at another one public meeting at twenty-four hour notice, there's no way I'd be able to do that. And I want to have some involvement because I'm grateful for what you guys are doing.
I might tell you, excuse me, I might tell you, we've been working on this since the beginning of the year.
And I've watched your meetings, but you have not had something for the public to identify as this is the agenda that you want to present to the city council.
That was the goal to have that.
Pardon me?
It was the goal to get that.
I know. So you've done that, but you haven't given us the time prepared us to be able to come back to you.
I would like to second that. I think the opportunity to review this document, which is clearly a work of a lot of effort. And I want to be able to find myself on Robert Keeler. I live at nine one two Hickory Town. Thank you so much for putting this together. I think all of us really, really do appreciate what you guys have done. If this is the all the time, we're going to have the opportunity to read this. I mean, I'm not sure am I supposed to read it in between sentences and then have feedback to you guys? Because this is, this is the first time it's been available for the public citizens to review. You have to give us time to review it and give you feedback. You actually have to. Otherwise, there's no point in even having a citizen review it. Secondly, secondly, I deal with legal documents every day. I also work for the state of Georgia, the Department of Community Affairs. And I do a legal documents every day and defining terms and roles and titles are critical documents that get implemented. So you have to get it right. You only have the opportunity to do it right once before you make a recommendation. And I think it's clearly premature to have any recommendations to the council at this point.
And I would just like to clarify, this is a public hearing. There's nothing to be voted on during this public hearing. And when we go into a regular meeting, the second item on the agenda is the tree ordinance discussion and recommendations. So that's when we can set another time to be able to have a meeting with the concerns that, you know, you all have. And we can make those clerical or name changes that that, you know, prior to it also. So so we do appreciate everything that you're saying. So anyone else in the favor of the tree ordinance that you would like to speak of? I will call for, you know, those who are not in favor in a few minutes, but if you're in favor for it, you would like to speak on it. I appreciate you. Um, if you would, say, state your name.
Yeah, Mary Beth Hughes. I live at four fifty-five River Street. I'm in favor of a tree ordinance, but like what's been said, I haven't had a chance to really look over this, so I would appreciate that chance. But I do have a question, and that is how much of this is retroactive to areas that have already been cut? Or does this only apply to areas moving forward once this is adopted?
Yes, it would have to be adopted first.
And it's not, it's not retroactive.
I'm sorry to say, this is one of the reasons why I know it seems like we're moving quickly. But there's, there's reasons that we need to move forward. And I'm not saying that we need to race and run and trip and fall. But time is of essence, only because we waited too long as a town. And so we take recommendations from the citizens because that's why we're here. We're not here for our own interests. We're here for the town of Tululepa's. So this is why we're bringing these recommendations. And if the recommendation from the town is hold up.
Well, I think you want to recommend to allow the town to review the recommendation.
Right.
That's what you're asking. The town gives the opportunity to review your recommendations.
Right.
And that's why if this is the first opportunity to read this, then we're not having that opportunity to review it and give feedback.
But I also feel that that we do have another opportunity when it's presented to the city council because the city council will take this recommendation and fine tune it to what what they want it to be.
Comes back to us with the recommendations and we look at it. Even though there's not a hearing, the council looks at it, changes it, sends it back to us. We look at it again. This is, this is far from any anywhere being over. This is just a rough draft of what we've come up with. So the people can look at it and then we can move forward with it. But it's definitely not set in stone. That's for sure.
Because I can understand where you're coming from about wanting to see this happen. You know, my former husband was on the city council years ago and like he tried to get a tree on that same place back then. So this has been a long time coming. And I appreciate his efforts.
Is it the grandfather clause? Is that what you're saying? You could not, you could not add into this that you can or cannot be grandfathered in by whenever you came?
Why not?
No, who said that? No, I asked.
Why can't it be?
Yeah.
I think all the way you go.
Yeah, does the town of Tululepa's have a tree ordinance in place right now that's been adopted?
No.
Okay, then you would not be able to enforce this until after the adoption.
Right.
So.
Exactly. Certain things like tree removal and things like that certainly could be enforced.
Not now.
Not now, but I mean.
There's an order.
Remember saying something.
I think where you're talking about grandfathering is a removal. Cutting.
Trying to address her comment about, does it just start with people going forward as a task or can you include some of the back history of?
Right. Obviously, that's why we're here, what's occurred in the last twelve, eighteen months.
Anyone else?
I thought there was a tree ordinance, but it was vague.
I'm not aware of one.
I was told, I was told there was, and I wanted to cut some trees down, that if there was more than one acre lot, and mine was one point oh one, that I had to get permission.
No, I'm not aware of it. That that doesn't mean it's yours.
Ms. Dobbs, are you aware of one? Sorry. Oh, yeah, on this. The former mayor and former councilperson here are not aware of a tree ordinance in the city of Tululepa's. There are E P, oh, it's E P A, U P D. I can't remember which alphabet it is. But over an acre, they take control and that's above our level. But I'm not aware of the town having a tree ordinance. And as Mary Beth had mentioned, this has been discussed for years and we all compliment you, this group, for taking your time in doing this. Because it's not, in my opinion, it's not things that have happened just recently. This has been going on for years. It's time to protect our beautiful community and the trees throughout the entire town.
Yeah, the entire town. Correct.
Yes, this is nothing. In my opinion, it's nothing. This is the entire town. When we did the planning map and we're making decisions on that. It's the entire town we're talking about.
Right.
Anyone else in favor of this ordinance or any discussion in favor? Yes, sir.
It appears that the horse has already left the barn in many of these. And I can understand your wanting to move very quickly because of this abomination that we've got on the right side of the road. So I would hope that we could move with haste and see if we can squash any other occurrences that are going to happen in the future like that. But I would prove to yourselves that we probably need to disseminate this document to everybody that is interested. And I think anybody that lives in this town should be interested in it because it affects us all. So we're trying to balance information dissemination with rapid movement to ensure that some things don't reoccur.
Well said.
And would you state your name for?
Phil Herring. I'm Dr. Phil Herring. I live on three hundred Tululepa's.
Thank you. Ms. Dobbs.
Karen, have you discussed the process and what's involved? What are the steps involved? Yes, because I think a concern is the head stuff. I apologize.
Yeah, there would be a public hearing from this board and then recommendations made to the city council. The city council then would have a public hearing prior to voting. So.
And when was this committee planning on sending it to the council?
Well, today's, you know, we're only going to have one public hearing. But after the concerns, I think that we can, when we get into the meeting, we can have a review period and set for another meeting.
Then it puts it out the other month. So I mean, that is what it is. You know, we'll try to try to get to the next month that, you know, that should give everybody ample time to have some, and we may have some changes ourselves. There's some changes that we may make ourselves to this document before we even give it to council. So.
You can make a comment period shorter than that for the for the citizens because obviously there's a probably a small group of people that are actually going to read it and provide comments to you. So I'm not sure if thirty-eight periods is necessary, but it's.
Yeah, but that's all we have. I mean, we're, we're, we all volunteer at times. So once a month is all we really have.
Why don't we say this? And this is just an idea. Have a review period for the next fourteen days and have any concerns put in writing to the city clerk. And then she can get it out to all of us or we can give you our email address and you can contact us directly. That way, there's us another two weeks in order to look at those concerns prior to our next meeting. I mean, we can't set that now during this public hearing, but if that's okay with everybody.
I like that too, but I'm going to ask, you don't put it out twenty-four hours before your next meeting, okay? Try to put it out a little bit ahead of that. So we can see if.
That's the reason I said fourteen days. And then in that fourteen day period, after the comments have come in, maybe Ms. Linda can have those ready for the public to pick up. Or maybe we can put it out on the website. All right, if that's all the comments for those in favor, I'd like to hear comments for those who are opposed of the tree ordinance. And if you would, please.
I'm David Urban. I'm one of the owners of J and D Urban Holdings and my office is here in Tululepa's. My brother's resident here. He's a owner also. First of all, I want to say the people that's talking about the long night shadow speed. Okay, maybe if you see any of our developments and see the finished product, you'll find them to be very attractive and very good. Okay, we've been forced by the town to move faster than we planned on, much faster. And if the town had worked with us, things would be a lot different. Anyway, I'll read this and then it makes more sense to me. Object to Tululepa's tree ordinance, and this is hand delivered to the zoning commission. Objection to proposed Tululepa's tree ordinance, this ordinance is not in the best interest of the city of Tululepa's. The proposed ordinance is volumous cumbersome and confusing. It will cause hardship to existing homeowners and businesses and stymie development and growth, which would be beneficial to the city and its residents. It makes it, it makes it very difficult for existing homeowners and businesses to move trees exceeding eight inches in diameter, potentially hazardous dead trees, and in some cases, difficult to clear potential hazardous underbrush. Is this a potential liability the city wishes to take on? Do any of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission or the city council have any expertise regarding the size of trees to be removed or the removal of underbrush? It makes it very tedious to make improvements to existing homes or businesses and also chokes the development of new homes and businesses. The extensiveness of this ordinance would create an unnecessary amount of confusion and would be extremely difficult to consistently and uniformly be applied and enforced. Also, there may be a conflict of interest among members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and city councils, which could be considered as acting for personal gain should this ordinance be passed. There would be extreme pressure placed on the slim staff of the city to apply and enforce this ordinance in a consistent manner to in order to avoid legal scrutiny. The city has already been faced with difficulties in applying and enforcing the existing ordinances in a consistent manner. And this new proposal, true proposed tree ordinance, would only compound these problems. As I have stated many times, numerous times, J and D Urban Holdings LLC is ready and willing to work with the city on a mutually beneficial development of their property. However, whether this or not, this proposed tree ordinance is is targeted at J and D Urban Holdings LLC specifically is beside the point. As this proposed ordinance is not in the best interest of the city. If passed, this ordinance will cause confusion, disharmony among the members of the community, hinder the city's financial needs and could result in the city being subject to further legal issues. J and D Urban Holdings LLC, this was, this was not written by me. This is written by my attorney, okay? J and D Urban Holdings LLC has constitutional and other legal obligations to to the proposed ordinance.
I think that says objections.
Objections to the proposed ordinance. J and D Urban Holdings LLC requests a tabling of the consideration of the ordinance to allow the city attorney and other representatives to discuss the proposed ordinance with counsel for J and D Urban Holdings LLC and other property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
The city can allow the rebuttal.
Yes, let me see. And again, Mr. Irving, you would have an opportunity to put your concerns or have your attorney to put those concerns in writing within the next fourteen days. Today's the fourteenth of July, so we'll set that date for at the meeting. I'm assuming that we'll set that for July the twenty-eighth, if you would have your concerns in writing to the city clerk.
And I appreciate your attorney letter. J and D Urban Holdings LLC is also the entity that both sued the town of Tululepa's, I think it sued one of these individuals. Is that correct?
It's not sued.
It's not sued. What entity, what entity filed suit against the town of Tululepa's?
No entity.
No entity filed, no, filed suit, but you discussed filing suits against the town of Tululepa's.
I said that. I said I went and worked.
Well, I, I, I think I heard in that speech discussing the lawsuits. Second point I'd like to make at it. If the beginning of your developments are what they end up living like at the end, then we certainly don't need them based on what we get to drive by every day. Thirdly, and this is probably the most important point I'd like to make is the contribution that J and D Urban LLC has made to the town of Tululepa's can be measured in one simple measure, tax taxes. And if you look at the total contribution that J and D Urban Holdings LLC has made to the town of Tululepa's, thousands of acres that you control, it involved basically a pit, a pit. So you contribute. I would like to send it before you interrupt, please.
May I ask?
I didn't interrupt you. Getting to the point is the contribution that J and D Urban LLC makes to the town of Tululepa's is essentially nothing until an opportunity comes arise when land values increase and now you come in and you strip it. You don't pay taxes, you don't contribute, and all you do is strip there. That basically does nothing for the town. So I'm not really sure why your, your speech regarding tree ordinance has any value remaining, quite frankly. tree ordinance has any value remaining, quite frankly.
Do you have a proposal you could submit to the city that you would approve the tree ordinance proposal?
That's possible, yes.
Maybe that's something you should, with your rebuttal or whatever, you could present something for me to look at.
Yeah, because, I mean, we were, we were presented with a task to come up with a tree ordinance that's fair for the town. Everyone, not just individuals living in any specific place, not just individuals with any certain interests, everyone in the town. So, all these things that we're talking about for personal interest all have to be gathered in a pile. But let me be clear. Personally, I can speak for myself, I've been tasked with this and I'm going to try to complete it, I'm going to try to complete it in everybody's interest, but I am going to try to complete this. I was told that there was trial before and it wasn't done. I'm going to, I'm going to see this through one way or the other, so I want to do it with everybody's best interest, but I do want to complete the task.
Let me, let me have a rebuttal to Mr. Who?
Only if you're going to keep it to the tree ordinance, okay, please.
Well, as far as contributing to the community, I've been here all my life. I've been in Haversham all my life, I was born in Haversham Hospital. Half his town is in Haversham. When, when, when this, when this community is built, my kids swim, swim, they grew up talking about, which was taken away, it was, it was a community swimming boot for the homeowners association, which never did really exist.
Anyone else in the opposing this ordinance as drafted prior to the fourteen day period? I, I wouldn't mind saying something else in favor of it. Okay, but I, yeah, I want to give anyone else a chance first, or he wants to say something, if that's okay. Anyone else would like to speak and may opposing?
Mr. Peter, how long do you sleep?
I've lived in Raven County property owner for twenty years, I've lived at my house in St. Louis.
Gentlemen, if we would, please give this to our public hearing task of the tree ordinance, I appreciate your opportunity of speaking, but we are public and it's being viewed via web. So, anyone else opposing this ordinance as written? Again, we're.
This is, this is Brian Urban, I also oppose it for the same reasons that my dad just discussed. As written.
All right, Mr. Urban, Mr. Brian Urban, if you would make those concerns in writing and get it to the town clerk prior to, or deadline of July the twenty eighth. Thank you. All right, if no one else is opposing this, we have one more comment for those in favor. Ms. Mary Ben.
Yes, obviously this tree ordinance will have absolutely no effect on what's happened to the property beside where my home is. But I would like to see a tree ordinance in place so that no other property owner has to have the destruction and devastation that I have had to look at now in these last couple of weeks. There was a wonderful natural buffer between my property and J and D Urban Holdings property. I was okay with what they chose to do over there because it's not my property, it's their property. But when they came, so, let me back up. I would like to see something put into this ordinance that says no trees can be cut down within that fifteen feet. Is that in here?
Everybody just read the buffer, read through this, please.
Okay.
You'll see a lot of things, you'll see a lot of things that, that, different concerns that'll be for people. There's a lot more for and a lot more against. So, let's, everybody do diligence and read through this. There's a lot of consideration, we've all put a lot of effort, and I know y'all know that, but there's been a lot of effort in this, back and forth, even, you know, discussions for us on.
About the legal resources of J and D Urban Holdings LLC.
What's that?
Yes, sir.
One of my concerns, I don't want to get into all of them, one of them is the buffers. I was confused in reading the document as presented. Some of the buffers I understood, some of the other buffers seem to conflict with what I just read. So, I couldn't, I couldn't get a clear understanding of all the buffers zones that was explained. So I just needed, that's one of the things I'll say in my, in my letter. I just like that clarification on this buffer, this buffer, this buffer, some of them, I don't know if it includes two buffers together because it's like overlapping.
We'll try to make those clarifications. Anyone else opposed to this public hearing? Okay. Did someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the tree preservation ordinance? Okay, second, awesome, all in favor? Right. So now we will start our regular meeting. The P and Z Board for the town of Tolu Falls, July fourteenth, twenty twenty one, and it is now six thirty six. With one item added to the agenda, which is Ms. Dyer's resignation. Let's go ahead and add that to the, the last agenda item. But can we get an approval of the minutes for the regular meeting July, I'm sorry, June the ninth, twenty twenty one, and the work session, June twenty third, twenty twenty one? All in favor? Okay, new business, we do have guests here with Georgia EPD. Heather Kelly and, I'm sorry.
Travis Harris.
Travis Harris, if y'all would like to come up and we'll start discussing the land disturbance permits. And any questions and answers to our guest would be available at that time. And if you would just tell us a little bit about what you do for Georgia EPD. Yes, sir.
I thought this was an open meeting for the second part, I thought we were closing.
No, sir.
I think you might close out the, the public hearing part.
Oh, we did, we closed it out, we had a.
Okay to attend for the second.
Yes.
I'm Heather Kelly, I work for Georgia Environmental Protection Division, which is a branch of Department of Natural Resources. So, my belief is what we're talking about, about adopting, say, Georgia model ordinance for erosion segmentation. So, yeah, that's what I do as far as. This is Travis Harris.
Travis Harris, for State Georgia EPD. I've done erosion segmentation in the past, on and off, as well as most of the, all the other medias except drinking water. So, in the state, twenty four years.
We appreciate your service.
And I can leave, I was going to leave some of my cards up.
And Mr. Harris, could you answer some of our questions on the tree ordinance if we?
Thank you, Michael, for the forestry commission.
Okay, I, we, we were talking about it beforehand.
We, we discussed trying to get somebody here, it's harder than, I mean, it's hard to get the logistics of it is.
I think we might have found a contact for Georgia Forestry Commission that would be a good contact.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Harris or Ms. Kelly?
If a private citizen has a concern about the road and their lack of erosion control in a sensitive watershed area, what federal agency should that private citizen report to? And how does that, could you explain that process to the audience?
As far as.
Has a concern about improper erosion control in a sensitive watershed.
As of right now, until an ordinance is adopted here, once an ordinance has been adopted here for erosion segmentation, then you'll have an issue with authority that you could direct that to, or you could send it to Environmental Protection Division.
What about federal? Federal issue, yeah.
Federally, that's going to go to EPA, so Environmental Protection Agency as far as erosion segmentation is concerned. Just being transparent, most of those complaints do get submitted down.
Right, I'm aware, I come out, I'm actually aware of the process, I'm, I'm doing this for the audience. Information, quite frankly. Is there a limit on the private citizen's right to file a federal complaint with the EPA?
There, there is a limit.
No limits, it can be done every day.
If it becomes an harassment thing, then, I, I mean, we do have.
Can an entity like a town also file a complaint with a, a federal complaint with EPA?
An official of the town can.
Okay, and this is a process following up on a federal complaint, the same which is contacting a state EPA representative. Is, are these, are these complaints on record and can they be brought up in meetings?
Complaints, once we receive a complaint, it is kept as Georgia state records.
We've got a Freedom of Information Act of course.
So we do, the state of Georgia, we do a Georgia of the Records Act, of course. So you would just go to the district office in which those records are maintained and request for them to be.
However, if the complaint is currently under investigation, yet to be resolved, that information would not be available.
So where, where would I, I guess really the question is, where would I find that, how many federal complaints have been filed against an entity like J and D? If in fact there have been any.
I would go to state Georgia.
No, I'm on the federal.
Federally?
Yeah.
I don't know, probably contact EPA on that, but I, I, I can look into that.
Okay, yeah, I would actually like, you know, I think that's because the information I have is a past history of an entity, a developer. It's important to look at future business model, it would look like.
So how many?
Yeah, federal complaints filed against an entity or a developer, or whatever, LLC, LP.
I can look into that, if you take one of my contact cards today and you, you can give me a call sometime during the work week and you know, sometime within the end of the week or sometime in the beginning, I actually find a good answer to your question.
So if a citizen has a concern, that citizen has a right to file a complaint with the federal Environmental Protection Agency regarding erosion or lack of erosion control in a sensitive watershed area.
What does the EPA regulate? What type of animals?
Um.
Vegetables?
I'm, I'm not going to try to speak for EPA.
We're specifically here for the model ordinance for erosion segmentation.
Within, does that include anything that's protected, like maybe a rare plant or a rare tree or something that is in that area?
It's, as far as endangered protected native species or things like that. We, I do not do enforcement for that, for Georgia erosion, like erosion and sanitation, I don't do protection for that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you said, you said there is or there is not any, any protection.
I do not do protection for endangered species, sort of.
Forestry. Forestry Division does. It's, it says if, if you look at Georgia law, the forestry does that. It's specific in there, and it actually lists some of the plants that they're looking for. So, Forestry Division for Georgia is who handles endangered species.
You have that now?
I can get, I can get it for you.
I'm just curious. Yes, sir.
For your information, we had an engineer do, do work with the EPD on all of our projects. We also did a study for endangered species and plants and everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Did we see that?
Yeah. It's sorry, I've been sent the thing. The time's running.
Linda has, okay.
Who does the inspection? What you're responsible for, either one of you come up here and go look?
I do inspections, but our inspections are complaint driven. So, we don't do, I can see your face, our, our inspections are strictly complaint driven. So, at the point that we receive a complaint for any type of permanent inspection or just a regular, non-permitted complaint, as of right now, until an ordinance has been adopted and is in place, that's directly EPD jurisdiction.
Okay, if I see a redirection of water flow when it rains more into my area than it was prior to development, is that something I would come to you guys to?
Our model ordinance does not cover water flow.
That's way above, I would contact you federal. Essentially not much.
If you were to see sediment in that water, then you would call me.
Okay.
If you think about erosion, then, then put that first. Obviously sediment involved, mud, mudslides, land movement, things like that, the, the big issue that EPD is strapped by as one of their rules and something that we've adopted and we're looking to adopt because we're adopting a model is the amount of land that has to be disturbed before a complaint could even be made. So, you know, it has to be above an acre before they are concerned about what may or may not happen on that particular line.
So who does the measuring?
I, I can do measuring, I have tools in my truck.
Have you done measurements of some of the land disbursements here in the town of Toluville?
I have.
You have?
Yeah.
And that, that information is available?
No.
Current investigation?
No.
No.
I took laser range finder and it was not J and D Urban's property, it was another property. And I calculated disturb to be greater than acre, I required the owner, I called the builder, not the owner, and told them they need to get a permit, because I thought we would a more, more, more clear than what we originally planned upon, they got a permit.
Do you guys do septic? Issues also because that's many disturbances? I mean, I thought like the county does local septic, but I thought it goes more than one septic for a lot of everything goes to the state. That's not you guys?
We do not do septic.
Yes, sir.
We've also had septic studies.
Exactly, well, what group is that go to?
It's county.
Now, if you do one, I was under the impression you could do one septic for multiple lots. That knows.
Okay, that would be under the Health Department. From the Health Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, this might go to Heather and Travis, this is somebody in the room. First great question here. I want to build on my law. What's the process? Who do you go to do for what, and you know, my lot's under an acre, my lot's over an acre. I think that, would that help clear up some of the confusion in the room? Because.
I know the law regarding the acres, I've, who does measurement and do combination of, hey, you could get what the entity owns where that's then a combination of disturbance, so there's a, there's a matter of interpretation regarding that rule. Yeah, that I've, I've actually discussed with, with other public entities.
So, the disturbance over the tool project is what we're concerned for the acreage.
Now, I have one more one, what about the erosion on the side of the roads? Land erosion that makes trenches that are like four or five feet deep along the edge of roads, is that you, or is that the DOT that has to address that?
Either be DOT or just, I guess, a local road department at that point.
I thought that would be you for this land disturbance.
Wait, what we can do, it depends on the scope of the project, so we have exemptions for like road maintenance type of things like that for erosion. It just depends on the scope of the project. What if DOT would be wrote down all the way? But it, when it comes down to questions about that, it's really a case by case situation, which I would advise contact you on that one, and we can do technical assistance and things like that, actually.
Does your records include keeping records of the federal, he takes place at, or delivers it over to you? You, you handle them, right, you handle a federally.
Yes, we reference them by complaint number in our complaint tracking system here in Georgia.
So if I do a tree of information, I could question if you're off, I could find out how many federal complaints you've had to handle.
We may not classify them as such, but usually, I know when I hear a complaint in the system, I have EPA, whatever, non-numbered.
Working, working back through the process, and if I contact the Environmental Protection Agency in Washington DC about an erosion issue in a, in a sensitive water watershed area, what happens after I hang up?
What they're going to end up doing is forwarding that to the state of Georgia.
To you, right, correct.
Region four.
Right, region four, right.
EPA, region four in Atlanta first, then to the state.
Then to the state, so the records of that. Then to the state. So the records of that call and that, that, and that assignment of, I guess, maybe contact or a complaint is kept where in your office? Is that, that region four's offices?
No, it'd be our Carterville District Office, state, EBD.
Okay. Uh, anyone else with questions or concerns?
The reason I'm saying, I mean, if you go, again, back to my question.
You're not sorry.
If you go to disturb my lot, I'm making a lot. I just sold a lot. I'm in realistic. I just closed my lot there. So that person is, let's just take them from ground zero. What is the process and who's in charge? And I think there's confusion as to what the town can enforce and what you guys can enforce and what the Health Department enforces.
Always start with the closest local first. So come here for your building permit and they should be able to advise you what else may be needed.
They will give you advisement if you need a land disturbance permit, um, if, or that land disturbance permit. You also need to notice the intent to say Georgia, which is our term name of the issue, um, at that point. That's where that information starts and that just depends on acreage and septic project.
Correct. And that's why I wanted that information now because I know that, that, yeah, a lot of people confuse this through the call and they'll direct you. Um, and then the other, the other comment was under an acre and over an acre. So you guys come in over an acre.
We will come in, if I receive a complaint on, say, private property or something like that, and it is, uh, just a question of concern and it's under an acre and, uh, I'm concerned about water quality as far as sediment entering state waters, sediment deposition into state waters, uh, I'll take a look at it regardless of the acreage. So it's as far as, it's the permitting trigger is where the acre part comes in, uh, but we do take non-permitted.
Again, if somebody is building their own home and they don't know the process and they're not putting up self fence because professional people know to do these things, it's under an acre, we can call.
It is buffer infringements and water quality is, we are concerned with that. Uh, just regular land disturbance, it's not within a buffer. Uh, that's, that's our ground is, uh, we get concerned as well as in buffer.
You're in for a permit, right? You just, you just. Right?
We do permanent enforcement, per.
Permanent enforcement, okay.
And also.
But obviously only if you're notified.
Right, exactly. You would go otherwise, right? So there's really, there's no doubt at all, just to make sure anybody who's building over an acre does what they're required to do. And then builders who have to go follow permits. Right? So it's really up to the builder, I guess, in a sense, to do the right thing.
Per the permit, they have to have.
Exactly, yeah. That's why another inspection that they have to start with that land disturbance permit. Otherwise, you just can't follow the permitting process. I believe that's kind of how it works, generally works, most of the time.
Heather, I have a first question. Uh, is over an acre, under an acre, is that a federal law or state, state?
That's for our Georgia erosion and sedimentation.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's a state act.
A state, so it's a state of Georgia.
And this is in our, our proposed land disturbance that we follow the, the state ordinance, the EBD.
I just wanted to clarify.
Model ordinance.
I'm assuming you are adopting the model order.
Exactly, right. You're still be, you will still be enforcing that as well. That's the whole idea of this. We're not really changing anything that's going on right now other than the fact that Tallulah Falls is saying that this is what we recommend for guidance. Because, I mean, face, let's face it, there are, there are guidances for people to, oh. And when you don't follow, obviously, it's up to agencies to say you're not following these guides.
Well, the one thing it would change, you would be considered a local issuing authority. And if we get a complaint, we're going to refer it to you for investigation.
Would that be under an acre or over?
Any.
Really? Yeah, that's, that's why in the past, cause I asked about this when I was in my former position, we didn't have this staff to be enforcing this. Well, I think that's the reason we're going with the state is because we still, oh. But if they receive a complaint, would it, you just say?
The real enforcement is the lack of getting the other permits. If, if you do not get a land disturbance permit, you're not going to get an electrical permit. You're not going to get a, so you really can't build. If, otherwise, you have to be occupied to build without permits. That just isn't happening in today's environment. People get loans and there's lenders who make sure this is all done properly. But basically, you start with the land disturbance permit. Otherwise, you can't get the rest of the permits to revert to build an outhouse. I mean, or much less a house.
But to answer your question, any and all complaints would be handled by the local issuing for, authority first. Unless there's potential conflicts, interest, government entities, you know, state affairs or whatever, then we would come in. Or if there's continued complaints, I say more than three on the same piece of property for the same item, then we would come in as well.
So am I correct to say that Linda is this town clerk, the local issuing authority for land disturbance?
I was unaware of this. This is news to me.
I would verify that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know she's handled it in the past. She was the administrative.
Yeah.
Well, there has to be certain.
Yeah.
The qualifications are like this, I mean.
You'd have to get certified through Georgia soil and water.
And you, and you have to keep that, you have to maintain that certification.
A level one B certification, what they call the red card. And it's every three years. We started that. I have to retake my.
I have the blue and the gray. I don't have the red, so.
I'm out.
So question, does that mean our local person would need to have the red card?
Yes.
Yes.
Or contracted out to someone else?
Once the ordinance is adopted, it turns into a situation where locally, uh, Tallulah Falls would have immediate jurisdiction. Um, so we can still receive complaints and we can still, EPA can still receive complaints, but it's just getting disseminated down one step further into the city.
Correct. But as it stands of today, July fourth, January twenty twenty one, Tallulah Falls is not responsible.
Right now. If I were to receive a complaint earlier this morning, it's in Tallulah Falls, it would be my jurisdiction.
Correct. And if we move forward with this, then we would need to have a red card person.
And you do collect half of the permits, which I believe is eighty dollars per acre total. So you would get forty dollars per acre.
Which doesn't cost.
It does not cost.
Right. And the initial fees that they already voted into the town. I mean, that's not the only fee that could be charged.
And thanks, like clarification. You need to be aware.
Yeah, it's a serious clarification. Honestly, it's news to me, so.
All right. And I'm trying to go back in an email that I had sent Linda back up now on LIA. I want to say she told me she was a local issuing authority. But I can't verify that at this time. But we can, um, we can get a clarification.
Another question I have is when, cause sometimes people, honestly, it's a deep situation. They don't hire professionals. Even today, they don't want to manage. And so, oops, they cleared this land. So the complaint goes in, you come out, well, the trees are gone. So you're going to require the sediment erosion fencing. And what are the other things that can be, what is your authority from that point?
So we do work off, this is written in Georgia code, we do work off of escalated enforcement. So as soon as I see an issue, I'm not going to run out and slap it, right? Uh, the goal is to get voluntary compliance. So part of that is, if it is over an acre, then we're talking about intentions of, it's a situation that's going to be broken up. It's a, a continuous lots, uh, that are going to be broken up. Uh, to a situation where it's going to need a, uh, permit for a common development or is it a standalone project or something like that? So that's really a case by case situation. Um, immediately, you know, if I were to walk out to a situation like that, there's absolutely no permits, no best management practices or anything like that. Uh, my first thought would be, let's get some best management practices out, some self fencing up, uh, uh, do some stabilization and then we can work out the fine tuning of, do we need permits? Uh, or am I going to issue a notice of violation for this, uh, whatever direction I could go after, you know, after that point. Um, so if we're moving into permitting or something like that, because somebody just genuinely didn't know, um, that's, we're going to do some stabilization first, then we can find to, um, what direction we might need to go with permitting.
Okay. And I just found my email and this was dated back in June tenth. The town of Tallulah Falls is not an official LIA, local issuing authority for soil and erosion. This was given up several years ago and is now done by the state.
I wonder if you adopt the model ordinance?
So this would be done by the state, once this ordinance is adopted by the city council. But then we have to have a red card. Now, it's saying that we are not a LIA, so we would depend on the state to be the enforcing.
Which you already did.
We are currently, right. So that does not require a employee of this town to, to be a.
An issuing authority. As of right now, no, you are not required to have an issuing authority or enforcement for, um, the model ordinance. Uh, if you do choose to move forward with adopting the state's model ordinance, then at that point, you'll need to have somebody, kind of like the same thing. You'll need to have somebody with a red card that can do that actual enforcement.
I think that was our purpose was to turn it over to the state was to keep from having to have that employee, right?
Well, that, that's what my understanding was, but obviously, um, the council's going to have to hear the information that we're gathering here. And then obviously further discussion is going to need to be made about.
We'll check with management as well to verify that.
Absolutely. So I appreciate it. Then send, send an email, let us know, um, what that is. Cause obviously clarification at this point right now.
Most jurisdictions that adopt the model ordinance want to be an LIA. Otherwise, he goes to the state regardless.
Right. So if that's not our intention, then we need to think about just leaving matters maybe where they are right now.
Possibly.
Again, I can't thank you enough for coming here tonight and helping us out because these are all things that you take for granted until you really know.
Any more questions for our guests?
What areas are you covering? Cause I know you're overworked.
Uh, I have, I have eight counties, like Raven Towns, uh, over Pickens, Cherokee, Forsyth, Paterson, Dawson, and White County right now.
I do have one last question. What level of complaint required they cited?
Uh, just a call.
Just call, okay.
Yeah.
Just, just jump to information. So I did it by, by your age, your, your.
Yeah, if you were to call my district office tomorrow and you had an issue for, um, and it fell under my jurisdiction being city Tallulah Falls, uh, then at that point, I would receive the call and I could schedule a time to come out and investigate.
Um, with such gracious, and thank y'all for being here today. And, uh, like she said, she's leaving her card. So if you have any concerns, you can give her a call and answer any questions we may have. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda of your new business is the tree preservation ordinance discussion and recommendations. Um, I think we already discussed this, that we need to vote on it to set a deadline for concerns in Rody to the town clerk by July the twenty eighth, closing of business on July the twenty eighth. Uh, someone wants to make that mention?
Yeah.
Okay. I see.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, any other discussion or recommendation on the tree preservation ordinance before our next meeting? And we have a second, uh, we wouldn't have another public hearing, would we, or would we make that?
Wouldn't be a hearing. It would be more like a discussion.
A discussion.
Being there to have people put input towards our final product.
Okay, so, so we'll put that on the next agenda for the month of August. Um, it'll be an agenda item. Um, and we'll take all those recommendations and concerns that we received by July the twenty eighth and, um, have that as a discussion that day. Okay, um, we have had three ordinance, uh, amendments brought back to us from the city council on the land disturbing, which is to set back restrictions. Proposal to amend zoning ordinance to exclude screenings. Um, so I think the concern is we have someone who is, is wanting to put up a fence and they're wanting to put up a fence within that buffer zone, which is fifty, or not buffer zone, but within that right of way, which is fifteen foot. So the setback restrictions, they're wanting us to exclude fence screenings.
Fence generally don't include in that right of way. You're like, that's a temporary structure, only a fence. And generally, that is a structure that's allowed within that fifteen foot right of way.
I think in our ordinance that we proposed to the city council, it was, it was written as that.
Yeah, cause I think that's considered a temporary structure of fence. And that's why I think in most ordinance, if you're allowed to build within, I think, twelve inches, I think, of the boundary, I think.
Yeah, um, but in that proposed ordinance, we had specified screening.
Okay.
So that's the reason they're asking us to amend that ordinance and take that screening out as part of the. So it's in the.
Thing for somebody or?
Well, I think it was to say that the setback restrictions do not apply to the screenings.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, like a tree or something like that, yeah, yeah. Like cypress.
Next question. Are fences allowed?
Yes, sir. Within the setback, they are. Um, under the current ordinance, but the proposed ordinance that we had sent to the city council, it was specified. Screening and then the next one is to exclude fencing walls.
I think that they're talking about, those are already our ordinances that we have now. And they want to see us make changes to those now to say, to, uh, that it doesn't apply to screenings such as a fence.
Right.
But they're already on the books. Okay.
All right. So there are the current zoning. Okay, so, so, um, then there was a third one, billing permit requirements. Proposal to amend zoning coordinates to exclude accessory buildings or structures under sixty-four square foot and not permanently affixed to another structure. So.
So that was for dog houses. Yeah. Against playgrounds.
So that way you wouldn't have to come and get a permit for such small.
So is it, are you allowing that building within that right of way?
No. Not that, this is a third.
I don't think that would fly in.
Yeah, no. Now, the fencing and the walls and the screenings is within the setback. And then the building permit requirements is for such a small building or structure.
I don't, I don't really have a reservation for any of that. And then all the comments. I think they're just trying to shore up what they already have and make the amendments to trees out conflict, which are getting conflict right now. So if we can help them out, I don't think that's a good idea.
Do we have existing setbacks defined already?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
I'm talking about for all types of setbacks, property lines, houses, garages, septic, everything.
Thirty, thirty-five feet from.
I know, I know you're, you're talking about, I mean, there's a city that it.
There is a current land disturbance permit or ordinance, but we're trying to update that. We're trying to, um, to make it more, um, clear, clear.
Is it anyway, I can get a copy of what's existing already?
Uh, yes, we should be able to. If you would contact Linda, um, I'm not sure that it's online.
Yeah, I believe it is online.
It is online.
But Linda is, she's very gracious about emailing you directly.
Is it under the Muni Code?
Yes.
Okay. So if you go under Georgia Muni Code and put a town of Tallulah.
I know you mail.
I haven't been good at that yet, so.
Okay, so this is a voting meeting. Um, would someone like, do you want to do these one at a time? Or would you like to take these three recommendations?
I think we could do three.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion about to, as written?
No.
Right, and second? All in favor? All opposed? Are you in favor or opposed?
You know, I really wasn't, not to main with that.
Um, would you like some more? Are you just, I mean, more clarification?
Sixty-four feet.
That would be like a doghouse.
Yeah, a doghouse, an A by H structure.
Yes, two pieces of plywood. So if you're going to build a doghouse, you would not have to come and.
Oh, thank God.
But you wouldn't have to come and get a permit to build the doghouse if you wanted a doghouse.
You cut down ten thousand trees, you might get a permit. You really shouldn't have to get a permit for a ten by. You cut down ten thousand trees, you might get a permit, you really shouldn't have to get a permit for a ten, but, uh, five, six, uh, doghouse, but that's.
That's my, I mean. You start this before we use it.
Well, this is saying that they do not have to come in and get a permit.
I know.
I mean, that would be paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a doghouse. I mean, yes, so, so we're excluding it, um, or asking for the city council, or giving our blessings to say, yes, please exclude this.
I guess I could.
Okay, all right, so all in favor? All right, uh, the next item on the agenda was the resignation letter of the secretary for the PNC board, uh, Teresa Dyer. Um, that is effective immediately, and I guess we just need a vote to accept that letter written, or letter of resignation. Yeah, okay. Uh, second? All in favor?
This means we need a new member.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
For easily?
Lots of fun.
So I, I bet the secretary wasn't, okay, the secretary was a voting member?
Yes.
Yes.
They have to take those? Could I just make a point, there's one person that introduced themselves in this meeting, could you please introduce yourself, I know you've spoken a couple of times.
Sure, my name's Marsha, Marsha Rock.
And you, I know you're representing, you're representing.
I work, I work with J and D Urban Hallways.
As an attorney?
No, I'm not an attorney.
Everybody else would have to introduce themselves.
And I'm. Secretary, let me clear, someone that interested is that, it's volunteer, now Christie does it, but Teresa did do it, and her absence, she started, so it doesn't mean the new member will be taking those, because they may.
Because blood tander taking notes is very dangerous. I have blood tander disease.
And I'll introduce myself, I did not introduce myself, and I'm new to town of Tallulah Falls, I've lived here for about two years. My name is Sissy Henry, and I've been in public government for twenty years. Um, I was interested in being involved in this town of Tallulah Falls. So I came home and at the first meeting, they made me chairman. What was I thinking?
And she's doing a great job.
She is.
Absolutely.
So.
We lost the archer.
Yes, we would.
And my contact information, you know, Linda's welcome to get that out, uh, all of our information is on the website as far as the PNC board. And, you know, we, we'd love to take feedback, so, um.
I would, I will seriously consider it, thank you so much.
Thank you. And so we did make that, and you did vote, so you got that in minutes. All right, so now, uh, open the floor for discussion, do you want to, yes, ma'am? Um, just in regard to that, um, what y'all amended to the proposal about the, I'm going to call it privacy steps. When can we see that available for the commitment?
It's going to be up to the council now.
Yeah, what, once this gets into our minutes, we will submit it back to the city council, the city council then will either accept or reject. And then, once they vote on it, it would be, I mean, you can look at the opposed ordinance, so it doesn't require a public hearing. Not on a separate, well, they don't have a public hearing on the.
On amendments, yeah, they may.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say that they won't, they may.
So I'm just thinking ahead as to what the timeline will be until I can have a privacy.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they're going to have to have that or not, obviously, th- this is a, a recommendation that we, that we make to them, that, that we're for it. There's no, um, against, so they can move forward on their end, what they're, it's, I don't know if they have to have it or even what that process is.
All right, and I'm going to refer back to my email from earlier today to. So we might get clarification to you on that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm prepared to come and get to my desk, but first I was thinking I had to get a variance, but then I understand that I wouldn't need all qualifications for variance. So that puts my timeframe even further out, I felt, um, so. And this is coming from, uh, the mayor earlier today. Uh, it specifically defines a fence, there's no way that it specifically defines a fence as a structure. So it's easier just to make a carve out as an exception in the setback. So, um, I think that that's what they're trying to do, and then we need to redefine a structure or a fence isn't a structure. So. I, I think it just needs to have some definitions, I think that's what he's asking here.
Yeah, well, fence definitely is not a structure.
Right.
It was a carve out.
It's okay.
Carve out, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, anyone else have any discussion on the upper floor portion of this meeting? Um, meeting to adjourn, anyone left question? Second? All in favor? Thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.